There. Um, and I know we're streaming live or we're recording live now, so we're there. We're very close to having everyone in with us. All right. Almost there. I'm just gonna let these last few people. All right. Great. We've got a good group again tonight. All right, so it's one past, so I think we can go ahead and get started now. So hi, everyone. Welcome to our third of three Alamo County School Board Town Halls all related to reopening schools. We're really grateful that people could join us tonight. Having an evening session, I hope, kind of makes it easier for some people who couldn't join us during the day. And I want to first introduce Katrina Carlson and Judy Lee, who are two school board members who are gonna be with us this evening for tonight's town hall. We are waiting for, we're waiting for Dr. Denise Bonds from the Thomas Jefferson Health District. She's been delayed, so we're just waiting on her, and I think what we'll go ahead and do is just kind of start up with a little conversation with the school board and just check back in with Dr. Bonds and, and just kind of go from there. My name, my name is, what's that?
I just saw her enter.
Oh, great. Perfect. All right, so that's perfect. Dr. Bonds is, has, is with us now. Um, so just for the moment, I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name's Helen Dunn, and I'm the Public Affairs Officer at Brown Mill County Public Schools. And I'm just here to serve as a moderator for these town halls. We're just discussing during these town halls, we're discussing many issues related to decision making around reopening Alamo County Public Schools during this COVID-19. Um, and we know that people have lots of questions. Those are really important to us, and we plan on addressing questions in, in lots of different forums. So many of you have been sending questions to me, to school board members upfront. That is fantastic. We're really happy for people to continue kind of touching base with us and, and just telling us what they need to hear from us. In the meantime, I do want to introduce people to, and I'm just gonna share my screen. I just want to introduce people to our website, which has a lot of really useful information about the return to school. So if you just go to K12AlamoRall.org, which is our home screen, our homepage, and you'll get there, and right here, you're gonna see return to school transition to 2021. This is our return to school webpage, and it is a really, I think, helpful webpage with a wealth of information. You'll see over here lots of, of links to things like cleaning and disinfection protocol or HVAC protocol. So I really want people to get to where they have familiarized themselves with this website so that they feel empowered to find answers to some of their own questions. A lot of the answers to questions are already out there. Um, so I want to go ahead and, and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now. But I hope that that helps people as they try to work through just finding answers to questions that they may have. Um, so we're collecting all these questions that people have, and we're gonna be answering those as soon as we can. Today, we really want to make, or tonight, we really want to make all this about hearing your comments, hearing your concerns and thoughts and feelings about reopening schools in the, in the fall semester. So questions, keep sending them to me, keep sending them to your school board members. Please also feel free to put questions in that chat box. We really want to hear from you and hear what questions that you have. We're collecting those, and we're gonna get answers as soon as we, we can. We're gonna most likely have an FAQ sheet that we're gonna be able to put on the website as soon as possible. And we're keeping that website current, so it really is getting you the most up-to-date information possible. But coming back to tonight, these town halls are meant to be a forum for school board members to hear your concerns with regard to promoting the safety of our students, teachers, and staff, and providing the best educational experience reasonable under the circumstances, of course, of this pandemic. So our school members are here to listen to you and to gather information that they can use as they make decisions about whether ACPS opens virtually or with some in-person instruction. So right now, I want to just take a minute to explain how the town hall will work. Our session is scheduled technically for 60 minutes, but we've got an extra 30 kind of built in. We've had two really vibrant, robust discussions already last Thursday and Friday, so we expected the same may happen again. So we're very happy to extend into, into, up to that 90 minutes. First on our agenda will be a brief presentation by Dr. Bonds, which we hope will give everyone a sense of the medical and epidemiological considerations of COVID-19 for our community and for the reopening of schools. And Dr. Bonds, I mentioned earlier, is the Director of the Thomas Jefferson Health District, so she really is a great person to, to tell us a little bit about what's going on in decision-making in our community. Participants, at the end of her presentation, will have the opportunity to ask just a few questions. And then after that, our school board members will provide brief dates on where they are in the planning process. And then we'll open the floor up to comments from participants. So again, we ask that you share comments, feelings, suggestions. We do want to hear your questions, and again, we just ask that you include questions in that Zoom chat box so that we can direct them to the correct personnel to answer them in an FAQ on our website as soon as we can. We're gonna get all those answers to you. Um, and these town halls will be also uploaded onto our YouTube site, our YouTube channel as soon as possible. And on that site, there is an option for translation, and I think that that'll hopefully open up some accessibility to people who are not able to, to understand in English in this format. We really want you to be able to join us as well. You can always submit questions to us, but do please feel free to take a look at that YouTube and, and translate as necessary. If you'd like to make a comment, as we've mentioned, we encourage you to do that after, once we start that conversation, that more open conversation. And the way we're gonna ask you to do that is just to use the raise hand function in Zoom. And where you'll find that is in the participants list. On your Zoom menu at the bottom of your screen, there's a participants list. And you're just gonna raise your hand there, and at that point, I'll call on people in order and unmute them. You'll have two minutes to speak, and I will time people. We do ask that you keep your comments brief and also respectful. As you can imagine, that's really important to us. We are all a community here. Um, and we do ask that people limit comments to things of more generalized import rather than those that are very specific to their families. Just because we hope that we can really get a sense of what's going on in a larger sense in our community. Um, so with all of that, I am gonna hand it over to Dr. Denise Bonds of the Jefferson Health District. Thomas Jefferson.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Yeah, thank you.
Can you all hear me? Perfect. So first, I'm gonna say I am very sympathetic to all of the parents out here. I've just spent the last half an hour frantically trying to figure out tech in my home because it's an evening, and I don't typically dial into these from my home, so my apologies. I'm gonna start by giving you some statistics about COVID and what's happening in our district. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the impact of COVID on kids, and then talk about some options and things to think about moving forward. So currently, within the district, there are 1,648 cases. 133 of those have been hospitalized, and we have had an unfortunate 30 fatalities. Albemarle has had 718 cases, 51 individuals have been hospitalized, and 10 of those fatalities have been Albemarle residents. Children have generally done well with this disease. We've had very low incidents. Across the state, there's been just under 3,000 or about three and a half percent of the cases between the ages of zero and nine. And between the ages of 10 and 19, we've had just over 6,000 or just about 8%. Here within the district, 4% have been between the ages of zero and nine, and 7% have been between the ages of 10 and 19. We have had one child between the ages of zero and nine hospitalized in the district, and two between the ages of 10 and 19. We've had no fatalities amongst children at this point in time. There have been eight cases of the complication multi-system inflammatory syndrome in the state. We have had no cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in our district at this point in time. I think it's important to point out that COVID-19 does continue to impact communities of color disproportionately. 19% of our cases have been in African-Americans, 29% in the Hispanic or Latinos. Amongst hospitalizations, 43% have been African-American and 19% have been Hispanic or Latino. 27% of our deaths have been African-Americans. With regards to outbreaks and educational facilities, there have been two in our district and 24 across the state. In the state, there have been 112 cases in educational facilities associated with outbreaks and no deaths. We do continue to provide testing for children in the district. Thomas Jefferson Health District does community testing, and we will test any child over the age of six. All UVA events that are happening include children, and there are a number of pediatricians that are offering testing across the district. Our current positivity rate, when I looked earlier today, was just about 7% in the district, and Albemarle is tracking along with that same testing positivity. So the governor has instituted a number of phases. In Phase One, special education classes and daycare for essential individuals was allowed. In Phase Two, that was opened up to include summer camps, and in Phase Three, in-person instruction is permissible if conditions can be met. I'm, I'm gonna talk a little bit now about what happens to children with COVID. I'm gonna preface this by saying, though, that information changes all the time. We learn new things every single day, and so what I say today may be outdated in a week, a month, or sometimes an hour. So bear with me. We'll give you the best scientific information that we have at the moment. So right now, it looks like children do pretty well with COVID-19. Those kids that get it seem to have milder symptoms. Perhaps a little bit more GI symptoms, lower levels of fever. They tend to recover quickly, and they tend to have fewer complications associated with that. We do see one serious complication that I spoke about earlier, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome that does seem to infect a small, affect a small number of children that require hospitalization and more care. There is no specific treatment for children, and actually, there's no specific treatment for COVID in general. It's primarily supportive. There are a number of investigations ongoing to try and figure out drugs that will either shorten the course or alleviate some of the symptoms. So now let's talk just a minute about what can be done to make it safe for kids to go back to school. There have been a number of organizations that have weighed in on this across the country. Most recently, the National Academy of Sciences has released a summary of evidence and some suggestions. And the American Pediatrics Association has also put out guidance. So overall, what we see is the suggestion that all schools adopt a culture of health. And that is composed of normalizing the fact that we all get sick from various things. And so removing incentives to come to school when you're sick, so not having perfect attendance awards, making sure that teachers don't have any repercussions if they stay home when they're ill, that there's plenty of sick leave and that there are substitute teachers when needed. The second is to normalize the wearing of masks for kids. I am told, I'm not a pediatrician, I'm an internist or an adult doctor, but I'm told by pediatricians and those that work with kids that kids actually take to wearing masks pretty well if it's normalized, and that's what everybody is doing. And so to the degree that that can be adopted in a school setting, that makes it much easier to keep kids safe. And then social distancing, trying to keep kids six feet apart to make sure that when they do breathe heavily, when they do aerosolize particles, because we do know this disease is spread through aerosolization, that there's far enough away that they're not gonna be directly impacted by that. Other items that bodies have suggested that could help would be to cohort kids together in small groups so that if you do have an individual that gets sick, whether that be a teacher or a student, that it's a small group of individuals that are impacted by that illness. To the degree that kids and teachers can stay together as a cohort, I think that's a really good idea. I know that's challenging when you have teachers who specialize in things like arts or in the upper grades where you have different subject matter experts. Suggestions are keeping the kids in the same classroom, trying to have the teachers rotate around with appropriate hygiene between classrooms by the teachers so that you minimize the spread to the degree that you can have lunches done in classrooms. So again, you have minimized interaction between kids between classrooms. Outdoors is great. When you're outdoors, you're spreading all of those, those aerosols are being spread by air currents, and so the more classes that can be done in an outdoor setting, the better. I say that knowing it's 95 degrees outside, and no one wants to be outside, but it really does help in reducing. And then the final suggestion that I thought was a really great one that has been adopted by some school districts is to set up a multi-stakeholder task force to really talk about all of the impacts that schools are more than just teaching kids. They also provide a safe instruction environment for children who might not otherwise have that in their homes. Many of our children in the community get at least one, if not two, of their meals a day in a school. Many special services are provided to children in schools as well, speech therapy, counseling, lots of other ancillary services that might not be available. So setting up a stakeholder group to really talk about the best way to make sure that children get all of their needs met, making sure that all stakeholders have a voice at that table so that all concerns can be discussed. So that's a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bonds. And with that, I'm gonna open it up to maybe two or three questions. And I'm gonna call on the three people in order. So first will be Govan family, then we've got Gency and Richard D. So we will, I will just ask all of you on mute, and then you can be ready to go.
Hi, my name is Mary Govan, and I am a rising sophomore at Alamo High School. I just wanted to say three things. One, I really want to go back to school. I miss my friends and teachers. But we would need to feel safe to go back, and I don't feel safe to return to school right now. If only half of Alamo High School goes back, that'll still be 1,000 people in the building. So I am finally starting virtual, and if it becomes safer, I would like to switch to going back to school or at least hybrid. Two, I really want to understand what virtual learning will look like, and specifically, how it would be different from the spring experience. Three, I really want to know what the county will do to improve virtual access for students who need internet service or who need extra help in school. Thank you. I'm sorry, this question wasn't for Dr. Bonds.
That is okay, and I'm just gonna second the internet access, the anxiety that I had getting on the Zoom. Because I also live in Albemarle County and recognize how challenging it is to have good access to do things like have Zoom meetings and to do a virtual classroom. So thank you for your comments, and I'm just gonna second, gosh, I wish we had broadband out here.
Thank you. Yeah, and always, always happy also to hear from our students. You're such an important, obviously, you're the reason we're here. So it's great that, great that you signed on to ask that important question. And next is, I've got Gency, so.
Yes, thank you so much. We moved here a couple of years ago from Park City, Utah, and our, we have a lot of friends there that are talking about what they're doing, which is a much smaller district, but what they're planning on is fully online and fully in-person available with a capacity to swap back and forth if sickness comes into a family. And I know that there's a lot of strain in a system as large as the school district we're dealing with. But I also know that this community is really vibrant, and parents are really ready to have structure in their kids' lives, and I think there are a lot of people ready to help. A friend of mine who's a teacher down in Athens was talking about how quickly they went online this spring. And for children that they didn't have Wi-Fi access, they had delivered paper packets. I remember being out of school in fifth grade for chicken pox for two weeks and had the packets at home. And so I feel like there are ways to handle potential inequities with enough instruction to make it where we don't have a system where it's no child left behind, but no child gets ahead becomes the situation, which is kind of how it was feeling in April and May. We were all scrambling to try and figure out what was going on and how to handle it, but I really feel strongly that synchronized learning, whether it's in-person or at home, is just critical to our kids having a sense of structure and parents being able to plan around that to try and get their own work done as well. And I'm gonna be signing up for subs. I taught art classes in Utah, and I'm hoping to figure out how to open something up in my back deck, which is covered as long as the weather holds for local kids or something like that, to just help buttress ways to do some in-person community contact for the kids that's safe and outdoors. But I'm curious about what would shut a school down. Again, I feel strongly that if the kids can at least have some in-person experience initially so they can meet face-to-face, meet their teachers at least for a month or six weeks before things, if they spiral again, that they've had at least an opportunity to meet one another and have that experience before things go down.
So, go ahead. I, I will just comment. I, I think the decision to shut a school down is a complicated one, and it, there are many aspects to it, and we would certainly work with the school if we had an outbreak within a school, and typically, an outbreak does not require an entire school to be shut down. It's usually on a class-by-class basis unless we're really seeing multiple classes affected. So I think the decision to shut an entire district down is probably one that would be made at a much larger even county or statewide level.
Thank you, Dr. Bonds. Very helpful clarification there. And next, we've got Richard D.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Yeah, thank you.
I'm on my husband's computer right now. I was wondering, this is sort of for, I guess, the county questions more than Dr. Bond, but we wanted to know, what is the plan if the number of families selecting in-person learning doesn't match the number of teachers that are willing to teach in person? HR has told staff we cannot apply to teach virtually even with ADA forms until August, which is after the decision is going to be made, which means the decision is going to be made before we even know if we have the teacher capacity. Many teachers who are not given the chance to teach virtually for health reasons or for any other reason may take a temporary leave of absence rather than risk their health or their family's health. So what is the county's plan to possibly fill many, many, many teaching positions in an 18-day period before staff is scheduled to go back on the 18th? Especially because in the last full school board meeting, Judy Lee referenced teacher capacity, and she said that she felt that we should, that the county should measure that, and it doesn't seem that anything's been done on that front at all.
Thanks so much for, for touching base with us on that important question. We, we are, we are thinking about all of these and more, obviously, many more questions, but I do want to open the floor up to questions for Dr. Bonds, so.
But is there no, is there no answer for how this, we are tech-checking teacher capacity in between now and Thursday, the 30th?
Yeah, so thanks so much again. We, yeah, as I mentioned when I was introducing the town hall, we're really hoping now to talk a little bit about concerns, thoughts, suggestions. And I do, I believe that you registered many of those in your question. But we really do want to make sure that questions, these kinds of specifics can get to the correct personnel in the school division to answer.
Here right now?
What's that?
Aren't, aren't those people on here right now?
Um, we, this is a school board town hall, as I mentioned earlier. So these, this is really a town hall for this, for the members of our school board.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna turn it over to, I've got, if, so we really do want one more question for Dr. Bonds while she's still with us. Um, so I'm gonna call on Priscilla K. And, and I would just ask that if your question is, is not for Dr. Bonds, that you hold on to it and just let me know that. So all right, so, Priscilla, I think you are with us now, maybe? I hope. I'm afraid I'm not getting through to Priscilla, so I'm gonna open up to the next person, which is Christina.
Is Christine, is that what?
Christine, excuse me.
Hi, thank you. My question's actually not for the doctor. I have something else I'd like to say, so.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna have to ask you if, while Dr. Bonds is still with us, I'm just gonna have to ask you, as I mentioned, if you'll just hold your comments for later. I really, really do hope that, that the next person will have a question for Dr. Bonds. We've got time for one more. All right, so I'm gonna ask Jeff.
Hi, I have, I guess, a two-part question. One is for Dr. Bonds, though, and one, it's really, my question is, I, I hear a lot of comments about how the flu is just as bad as, or just as bad or worse than COVID. And I've even heard people say that we didn't cure the AIDS virus, and we still went to school, so what's the difference? And while I don't think these are majority opinions, they're certainly not mine. They're out there, and I'm wondering if you could speak to, yes, I guess kids don't experience COVID complications in the same way, but there's many adults that will be interacting with kids. Can you explain to anyone that might be listening and not understand how serious this disease is? Could you go into that for us? And I have a question for the school board as well.
I, that is a great question. So I did say that kids seem to do pretty well with COVID, and that is absolutely true, but adults do not. And there are a number of adults that have been in the hospital for weeks or months, and a number of people who have died. The, I'm sorry, I don't have the, it's over hundreds of thousands of people have died from this disease. And while certainly a large number of individuals do die from the flu every year, it's not nearly to the same degree. And another difference is that we do actually have a reasonably effective vaccine for the flu. It's not 100% as anyone knows, but it certainly does a lot towards keeping symptoms milder if you do come down with the flu. And, you know, many years, we get a pretty good match, so we have a much lower flu incidence. So the, just because kids do well does not mean that this is not a serious disease. It, it absolutely is, and if I've given that impression, I, I wanted to spell that right now. And I recognize that the community in a school is not made up just of kids. There are a large number of adults, many in that high-risk age group, that over 55, over 60-year-old group. And, you know, we have preliminary evidence coming out that certainly kids in that 10- to 19-year-old age group can transmit the disease to adults just as easily as adults can transmit it to each other. So we, we don't have a great estimate for the younger age group about how easily they can transmit the virus to adults. But that's probably because we just don't have a lot of kids in that age group yet, and a lot of evidence one way or the other. I also would be remiss if I didn't tell everyone that this is gonna continue through flu season, and the symptoms between flu and COVID are very, very similar. And you, you can't, we don't have a vaccine for COVID, but as I said, we have a reasonably effective vaccine for the flu right now. And so it would be very important for everyone to get their flu shot this year. And for everyone to get their kid their flu shot this year, more than any other time. It's gonna be very challenging to determine the difference between the two clinically without getting a test. And we definitely run the risk of overloading our hospitals again if we don't have a lower burden of flu than many years. So it absolutely is a hugely serious disease. Adults are impacted. Schools are a community of individuals, not just children. And it, this will continue through flu season, and that will be a disastrous combination to our healthcare system, frankly, at that point in time. So Jeff, thank you for bringing all of those great points up. I do want to tell people, if you've got a specific question, we do have a hotline at the Health Department that you can call. The operators there have lots of answers to lots of questions, and if they don't know, they're Um, the operators there have lots of answers to lots of questions and if they don't know, they're always willing to try and track it down for you. Um, so uh, um, if you didn't get your question answered, please feel free to call the health department hotline. Uh, that's 434-972-6261. Um, or you can go to our website and it's posted right there on our homepage. Our website is TJHD.org. Um, and that'll drop you on there. So.
Thank you. That was that, and that sort of segues for me into the next point of why we should, I believe we should open virtually. Everything you said is a real, makes me just scared to, to experiment with our kids and our families in schools and it just feels like we have other means of educating and we clearly have a big, um, big, big, um, it's a big experiment to put kids and adults in a situation that's not unsafe. That's not safe. My only other question was for the school board was, I know Judy had mef- mentioned, wanted to hear from principals at the last school board meeting and also someone else already mentioned that we don't really know our teacher capacity, but I'm curious if you had heard from any principals as you had asked to hear from them at the last meeting. I've, I personally haven't heard very much and I'm just wondering, I feel like so many people have questions about what school will look like. Um, I've been like, we, we don't know and I don't feel like information's being shared. We're not seeing what these classrooms will look like, even though I mean, the classrooms are there, videos exist, we can, we can do a mock classroom and that's not being shared. And I feel like parents need to know that they're, they're making a decision. And I, I'm curious what information has been shared with you because as a parent myself, I don't know what the rooms look like. I don't know what it like, I just feel like there's a lot being left up in the dark before people are supposed to make this decision.
Thanks so much. Yeah, thanks so much, Jeff. We, I, I, I really appreciate your question for Dr. Bonds. I think that was very helpful and uh stimulating question, too. Um, and I just want to point out that um principals at schools are actually going to be having uh town halls themselves. So you will be able to have direct interaction with um, with your actual school specifically. Um, and I think that's really important. So I know that you had a question for Judy Lee. Um, please feel free to touch base with her directly. I wanted, before we do that, to um, uh, just to thank Dr. Bonds for having been with us and for providing so much really helpful information. Um, I know that, that this is the kind of, these are the parts of, of these town halls that, that I know people really get a lot of good scientific um factual information that's really helpful. So thank you so much, Dr. Bonds.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, thank you. And just a reminder that Dr. Bonds, as she mentioned, that the Thomas Jefferson Health District webpage is, is fantastic. It's really easy to navigate. And I would encourage people, as she just did, to, to head to that. I think it's TJHD.org if that's correct. Yeah. So head over there, use the hotline, touch base with her, because I know we have quite a few people with questions still, but I want to let her go about her evening. Um, and, and I want to hand it over to our school board. Um, who will just speak for a couple of minutes and then we're going to move on to continuing this, this conversation. And again, we'll be um really taking comments, we'll be taking suggestions. We're gonna try to contain questions to the chat box. You're also welcome to engage via email, Facebook, any other way that works well for you. Um, so with that, I'm just going to hand it over to Judy Lee and Katrina Carlson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katrina Carlson. I'm the school board member from the Rio District. I'm so glad to have the opportunity to hear directly from you today so we can understand more about what issues surrounding the school division and the school board's um development of options and our decision-making process, um, which ones are most important to you. Um, first off, I want to make sure that you all understand that although the school board has decided to shift the first day of instruction to September 8th, um, to provide more time to prepare, no final decision has been made about how Alamo County Public Schools um will reopen. It's not an easy decision to make because no one dis- no one disagrees that um it's best for students' um social, emotional and cognitive development to be in school uh with the support of their teachers, their pe- peers and everyone else in the school. Even a hello from the bus driver at the beginning of the day or sometimes in the afternoon is something that many students look forward to. Um, but as you know, it's not a black and white decision. Uh, ultimately, it will be the school board that makes the decision of how to balance the health risk uh with educational challenges. We are currently considering how we can balance the needs of all 1,400 of our students, uh 2,500 of our employees and our larger community. I saw a question earlier about, uh, you know, do we consider the community at large? We, we are, while having the best possible outcomes. Um, we have received hundreds, uh, dare I say, probably a thousand at this point of letters from the community uh with questions, suggestions and comments, and we are really grateful for that uh input and we're using it to inform our decisions and um to look into issues. The questions that have been submitted, I will say the quote, questions that have been submitted prior to this and that are in the chat feature are going to be um added to our frequently asked question sheet and they'll be published on the website, the website that Helen walked us through. Having said that, we have to acknowledge that we don't know everything today. Um, that honestly, that we're even going to know by our July 30th meeting and we certainly don't know everything today that we're going to know by the time our schools are reopening. The goal of this meeting is not to answer every question right now. Um, the, the real goal is, goal is that today we are looking forward to hearing your concerns, um, learning more about your experiences and your opinions so that we can make the most informed decision possible. And I'll also say that having this been my second town hall, that another really important function of this is to have the community be able to hear each other's concerns and what other people are thinking. Um, and I will add, because I, I know, um, we had a comment, I think it was from, she was using her husband's account, but Richard D., but an example of that is there was, she was asking questions that we don't necessarily have to answer, but that's absolutely something that will be on our mind when we're making the decision on July 30th. So the goal now is to get those issues out so that we can hear them, not that we have answers for everything. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Judy.
Thanks very much, Katrina. And I, um, I wanted to second that. Um, one thing, and I know that it might be frustrating for people who are asking questions to not have an immediate answer now. For me, it's very helpful to hear the fact that that question is on your mind. Um, so for me, I, I find those to be quite um informative and obviously the emails that we've gotten uh with all those questions have been informative as well. So uh, I am Judy Lee. I represent the Rybana District. And I want to talk a little bit more about the process that we have used as a school board and our decision-making so that everyone can understand um where we've been and what factors are going into this process. And uh, I'd like to first reiterate that our school division has a fundamental obligation beyond that of educating children, of first being able to keep them safe and healthy. Um, and I, I think we have that obligation to our entire community to answer a question of the form. As you know, as Dr. Bond said, the coronavirus landscape is extremely dynamic. Uh, it does seem to change every single day. So um, I just want to tell you a little bit about what our process has been for coming to a decision. And that it also includes closely monitoring infection rates and levels of risk in our community and has been premised on risks remaining low or improving. So the process has been as follows. Uh, for our planning processes in May and June, ACPS had a task force assembled to prepare a plan for reopening that included four areas of focus, healthy environment, healthy staff, healthy students and healthy learning. Um, in addition, in addition to division staff, principals, counselors, teachers, nurses, custodians, transportation staff, and many others were part of these working groups. And then uh, on July 9th, three hybrid options uh were presented with the scheduling considerations and update. Those were, those options were given uh were presented, given the constraints of transportation space in our schools. Uh, we're in the middle of a survey of parents right now, as others have mentioned, uh, where we also surveyed teachers after those plans, those options were presented on July 9th. And then this Thursday at 2:00 PM, there's a special board meeting where the board will be presented with those options again as well as an all-virtual option. As we've worked our way through this planning process, we've looked at hybrid learning models and all virtual learning models, uh focusing our efforts on high-quality learning and best outcomes for students. Regardless of the model that we eventually decide to use when we begin school, we will make special provisions for our most vulnerable learners. Additionally, we are maintaining a focus on technology and providing internet and devices for all students so that all students will have equitable access based on his or her learning needs. Um, so with that, uh, we'd like to open up this conversation with our participants. I want to thank you all for coming. Please remember to keep your comments brief so that others have the opportunity to speak if they wish. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen in the menu under participants list. Uh, I'll also mention just for myself, uh, as a former journalist, I do take a lot of notes. So if you see me looking down or looking over here, because I keep my notes over here, I'm just, I want to make sure to capture everything that we hear so that it will help me process um this huge decision. So, thanks very much.
All right. So I'm just going to call the next three people, Michael B., um, Priscilla K. and Christine. So please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, Michael. Yes.
Fantastic. So I am calling from the spouse perspective. I am a spouse of a kindergarten teacher in the county and I am also a member of the military who interacts with a lot of people. So one of my biggest concerns for the school year starting off is that my wife's going to be interacting with anywhere's from 18 to 20 children in the classroom because there's no plan right now how that's going to be diminished. And she's going to be responsible for the sanitation, for ensuring her students are able to maintain socially distance. Um, there's, there's talks that there's going to be limited breaks for these teachers because of the dire situations that we are in. And uh, my big question is what legal considerations does the school board in the county think in for our teachers and our support staff? When uh not only do students start getting sick, but as well as when teachers get sick, what are their compensations going to be? Because we're a dual-working income household. And uh, this is a consideration I have to think of if she gets sick and then I get sick.
Thanks so much, Michael, for, for touching base with us on that very important question. Um, and I know that this is something that we are working on. Um, and so we've logged your question and that's, we're gonna, we're gonna include that in the list of questions that we are compiling right now. Um, and so next up is Priscilla K. And I just want to remind everyone that this really is meant to be an opportunity and a forum for sharing thoughts, suggestions, concerns, and um, and we hope that you'll include uh questions that you have in the chat box or that you'll email them or touch base with us in, in various, in many various forums that, that are available to you. All right. So Priscilla, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my audio wasn't working. Is it, does it seem to be working now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It wasn't working the first time I was called on.
Thank you. It's great. It's perfect now.
I just wanted to share um a perspective of a parent. I have three kids um in Alamo County Schools and I just want to say, just like I trust the teachers to teach my children, I trust them to keep them safe during the day. I trust them to take care of them if there's a tornado or an active shooter or these other horrible things that they plan for. I just want to say, I think it's important that we respect our educators and our teachers as the experts on what can feasibly and safely be done in schools. Um, so I just want to share my support that we listen to those voices because just as I know how to do my job well, uh, I trust that they know how to do theirs well and that they know what children can do and what is safe for children, for families, for staff. So I just want to share that.
Thanks so much, Priscilla. We, um, we definitely appreciate your comments. And uh Christine, you are up next.
Hi, um, first I just want to thank the school board members, um, especially Judy and Katrina and of course Helen, our moderator. Um, I know these are really difficult conversations, but they are important and both parents and teachers deserve a chance to be heard. So the way I look at it is that we have an opportunity. Um, the AAP, the CDC, respected physicians in our community who we've heard on these town halls, our, and our governor have all said the same thing. Get our children back in school. They reference the scientific studies, the contract chasing data, information from daycares that have remained open and data from other countries where schools have reopened. And they all show that children are a dead end for COVID-19. That is, they largely do not get sick and they do not spread it. Um, we heard today even um the doctor earlier mentioned that too. Um, in fact, it's because this data that is so striking that we're even having this debate right now. I mean, we have this opportunity because the data shows this. I'm asking that we seize this opportunity and provide a choice to both parents and teachers. All four scenarios returning to school offer a virtual option. Only one out of those four removes that choice from both parents and teachers. I'm optimistic that if we are given that choice, that we'll be able to find a solution that accommodates both groups, especially if we pool resources countywide. Please don't give up on the children and families for which all virtual schooling will be detrimental to their learning and overall health without even trying to see if we can make it work. Please don't force all children and all teachers to be virtual. Please give us the opportunity to choose what is best for our families. Further, if the school board does vote to remove choice from parents and teachers and go all virtual and not look at the data and listen to experts and the governor, I want to know what criteria will we use and who will we trust to tell us it's now safe enough for in-person school? What does safe enough even mean and what level of risk is acceptable as nothing we do in life is without risk? If we are waiting for a vaccine, then we should be prepared to wait years. The most optimistic projections have been coming out in 2021. And even then, we have to consider scalability. It'll take time to manufacture the extraordinary number of doses that we will need to vaccinate the country. And healthcare workers and the elderly will need priority. Finally, if we do have an all-virtual start to the school year, and I hope it's only a start, the county needs to pool all resources and work smarter, not harder. Teachers should be working together to create the best content across the whole county. So it is of the highest quality and it is standardized for every school. Elementary with elementary, obviously. This will allow teachers to spend more time with small group and individual instruction, which will be imperative for trying to build relationships and increase student learning. Um, I think the debate about sending parents and teachers back to school is inherently emotionally charged one, as we can see from these meetings and online everywhere. But it's important now more than ever that we base our decisions on data, facts and expert recommendations and not let fear and emotion take over. And I fully recognize, as you mentioned Judy, that we do need to keep reevaluating what we know and what data has come out as we get closer to school. But all I'm asking is that we don't remove parent and teacher choice from this, that we give us an option at least right now, because that is what the data and experts are telling us to do. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Christine, for sharing your thoughts and comments with us. Um, and I'm just going to take a moment here after we've had a few people comment to check in with Judy and Katrina and find out if they have any comments generally that they'd like to make before we move on to the next, next batch of, of, of speakers. All right. I just, I want to say that I appreciate it. So, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, I would echo that. And I would let everybody, I, I take notes too. So if I'm, if I'm looking down, that's what I'm doing. I would just say, I, I remember that was echoed in the previous town halls about elevating teachers' voices. And I kind of, that's cool. I did have the all-virtual, if we go all-virtual to have uh grade-wide curriculum. That was actually something I hadn't heard before. So, thank you for sharing these thoughts.
All right. So um, next three uh speakers will be Nicole. Uh, Nicole Group, I've got Michael after her, Raheli, and then Summer K. Um, so you three will be up next.
Hi, this is Nicole Group. I just wanted to first say that I am a co-chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee and we have put together a letter that we will be submitting to the ACPS School Board and members shortly after this that has more of our questions. Right now, I'm just going to present a couple of paragraphs from the letter that we have um collaborated on over the past couple of days. And I thank you guys very much for your time. So, as we all continue to navigate this unprecedented, unprecedented educational landscape, the members of the Special Education Advisory Committee and fellow sped family members want to publicly acknowledge the tireless hours and work of the Alamo County School Board, school administration and educators that they have dedicated over the past couple of months. This open letter serves as a collection of comments and questions from parents of children with special needs who have reached out to the SEAC members over the past several weeks and months. We would like the school board to consider and respond to our community's concerns addressed herein. Our vulnerable student population has been differentiated by Governor Ralph Northman as one of, that has been disproportionately impacted by lost class as one that has been disproportionately impacted by lost classroom time. He has stated that their return to in-person learning should be prioritized and given permission for in-person instruction for special education students in Phase One of the Phase Reopening Plan. Further, Virginia's Secretary of Education has said that special education students are among those for whom in-person learning is most essential, as they depend upon the structure, in-person connection, and resources that our school community can provide. We respectfully request that the school board consider an in-person learning option for all students with individualized education, educational plans, also known as IEPs. A fully virtual plan will not meet the educational, social, or emotional needs for this student population, some of whom require one-on-one assistance throughout the school day. Some students may require only periodic in-person instruction to augment virtual learning, while others will require more consistent in-person support, as they may be unable to benefit from any virtual approach being considered. We would like to ask you that you take into account several comments and questions that are addressed in our letter that I will be sending to each, each member of the school board after this meeting, from our families concerning the return-to-school plans that are currently underway. We realize that there will not be a one-size-fits-all scenario that will work for every child. Nonetheless, for our population of kids, we strongly encourage the following learning environments that are outlined in this letter. I also want to encourage any of the parents that are listening who have kids with special education needs, please go to the county's website for the Special Education Advisory Board and contact their school representative. We're here to listen to you, we're here to learn, and we're here to help each other. So please contact, we're really, really looking forward to your voices. We thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. We eagerly await the county's back-to-school plans and look forward to further collaborating with you in our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And next is Michael Raheli.
Hi Helen, this is actually Johanna Raheli. I'm Michael Raheli's wife, and I'm on his account.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I am a parent with three young people in Alamo County Public Schools. I have twin eighth graders and an eleventh grader. And my family and I greatly appreciate and have high regard for Alamo County Public Schools and the education that has thus far been provided for our children. My family and I are against reopening of schools in a hybrid format, and we are for the virtual, fully virtual reopening of schools. And I have three points that I'd like to make in regards to that. So, the first is that Alamo County Public Schools has an excellent reputation, and has, the schools have excellent teachers who are highly educated, who have years of experience, and who are experts in their field. Alamo County Public Schools will lose teachers if it opens its schools to in-person learning before there is a vaccine for COVID-19. It will lose these amazing teachers to other fields. It will lose them to early retirement. It will lose them to other districts, and it will lose them to sickness and death. This will not only be traumatic for the students of Alamo County Public Schools, it will also greatly reduce the quality of education provided by Alamo County Public Schools. Subpar teachers with less, less education and less experience, who are hired as emergency hires, who have no relationship whatsoever with the students, will be hired to replace the current experts who teach at Alamo County Public Schools. This will weaken the quality of this school system on a long-term basis, as well as an immediate one. My second point is that opening the schools to in-person learning will spread the disease which has been contained in the student population thus far due to school closures since the middle of March. In-person learning, even in the hybrid format, will spread the disease to students. It will spread the disease to parents. It will spread the disease to relatives, friends, and to the entire community of Alamo County, causing death and sickness and trauma throughout Alamo County. My third point is that children and teenagers have been kept safe from COVID-19 and a widespread in this population due to the closure of schools. They will certainly experience COVID-19 if schools reopen to in-person learning before there is a vaccine for this disease. The long-term effects of the disease are not known, and only now are autopsies revealing that the disease can damage the lungs, the heart, and the brain, and all other organs permanently. The young people of Alamo County are not participants in a science experiment, and it is not the community's place, nor is it the school district's place, to put them in a petri dish where a damaging disease will affect them for the rest of their lives, causing lifelong health problems. Thank you so much for your time, and I greatly appreciate all that you do for the young people of Alamo County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Summer K.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Hey, I'm a parent. This is Dominic Osslick. I'm using my children's account. I have had three children go through the Alamo School System pretty much all the way through. And thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. You know, I think one of the glaring omissions, and the reason I spent some time to stay in tonight and listen, is to interject into the record some very important things in terms of risk management. Risk management is a very personal thing. There are between two hundred and fifty and four hundred and forty thousand deaths from doctors errors in the United States every year. There's eighty-eight thousand alcohol, thirty-eight thousand car, sixty-seven thousand drug overdoses, three hundred thousand for obesity, four hundred and eighty thousand for cigarette smoke, forty-one thousand for secondhand smoke, forty-eight thousand suicides. Amongst that, you cannot say that our children wake up every day without risk. What we did hear from the doctor is that there are zero deaths from our children, and that the, the amount of other hospitalizations that she mentioned, three, are less than the amount of children I know just taking gymnastics who get injured. I'm not even talking about football, etc. So, we get up every day and we deal with risks. And, and I want to restate that that statistic that was in the scrolling chat for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand traditional flu deaths this year is from the CDC's own site, comparing to a hundred and thirty-some thousand COVID deaths. So, we do not have an effective vaccine, otherwise we wouldn't have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand deaths from that. And so, when I hear that many people want to close the school system, or go, go online, etc., I would say, as a consumer, give us all our money back. And if you don't want to give us our money back, what we really have is, is a, is a society organized around force. Because if we had a chance to spend our money where we wanted to, I think there would be a giant sucking sound in terms of the population in the Alamo School Systems. And so, what we need is true choice, because these issues of health management and risk management are very personal. And I'm not trying to tell anybody else to, how to handle those affairs, but I also don't want you to have the money that's allocated to the children either. Let us all decide, and let the people vote with their feet. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is going to be Anne Lancaster, then we have Lori Ann and Kate G.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, this is Maddie Lancaster. I'm the daughter of Anne Lancaster, who is an elementary school teacher at Holly Need. I, I went to Holly Need myself, and I went to Sutherland Middle School, and then I went to Alamo High School. So I've spent quite a bit of time in Alamo County Schools. And frankly, I'm super disappointed that this is even in consideration, considering the risks. While children may be less susceptible and less affected by the virus, you're still putting every single staff member and their families at risk. In my family's case, if my mom goes back to school, she loses the opportunity and ability to see me, because I am, I do have an immune deficiency, and you are taking away her ability to see her daughter safely. Not only that, but she can't see her parents, because she doesn't want to risk infecting them. And who knows how long that could go on? By forcing teachers to go back to school, and by, by allowing kids to go back to school, you are then forcing teachers to go back to school. You put them and everyone they come in contact with at risk. I don't understand how anyone is okay with risking people's lives. While I understand that education is so important, I myself am a PhD student currently, and I'm doing all my classes virtually. So I get it. I'm all about education. But no one can learn properly if they're sick, if someone they know is sick, or if people are dying. Why not choose the safe option to educate kids while also keeping them safe? There is that option. It's just, I don't see how there even is a choice at this point. And frankly, one thing I think, think about is, all of us right now, we're not meeting in person. So how are we even talking about sending our kids to be around a bunch of other people, when we're not meeting in person?
Thanks so much. We appreciate your comments, Maddie. And next up is Lori Ann.
Hi. My name is Lori Ann Stotter. I teach at Mountain View Elementary. And I wanted to address a couple of things. Priscilla said that the goal is, how do we keep, you know, we're going to keep our kids safe? And I just wanted to share with you a couple of details of how I would be keeping students safe in the classroom, if I were teaching in the classroom. And my classroom is eight hundred and eighty-four square feet. And in order to follow the CDC regulations and the guidelines that are being established right now, each student would have an eighty-one square foot area that they would have to stay in at all times with their desks. In order to make that happen in my classroom, the only furniture that will be left in my classroom is one garbage can, a four-foot bookshelf, and a two-foot by three-foot desk for me. And then, there would be twelve desks and chairs for students. According to the CDC and guidelines for keeping, and with our governor and some of the guidelines that Alamo County is establishing right now, I would be required to remove all carpeting, all, anything students would touch. And so if you can imagine, our soft cushions are gone, our couches are gone, everything that provides choice and comfort for elementary students, this is for third grade, will be removed. And students in my classroom, they will not be able to have cubbies, because that's a top area for congestion, and I need to leave a two-foot path there in order for them to get to the sink. So I've already looked at that. And then there are areas that I have to leave clear for fire exit, or, and then areas that can't be used, because it's part of my intruder plan to keep students safe. Now, having said that, additionally, I will have to, in order to keep myself safe, I will be confined to a certain area in the classroom so that I am always six feet away from any student if they're sitting in their desk. And all of instruction will be on, you know, through verbally, through me, or projected on the wall. Where, right now, students will not have any shared materials, and those will be at their desk. Additionally, my plan in order to keep them safe is that normally, we would have a free choice where they could just sign themselves out and just go to the bathroom and come back, or get a drink of water and come back. We will not be able to do that, and because we have to monitor how many students are in the bathroom at a time.
Thank you. Sorry, Ann, I'm actually-
I just have one more thing to say.
I'm going to have to move on so that we can go ahead and accommodate next speaker. So Kate G., you are up next. Thank you, Lori Ann.
Thanks, Lori Ann. My name's Kate G. I'm also a third-grade teacher. I teach at Broadus Woods. The teachers I'm working with this summer have really common goals, and I'm speaking in consultation with many of them right now, who could not be here tonight. We want to go back in person, too. One of our biggest jobs is to prepare for worst-case scenarios and keep our students safe. We do fire drills, tornado drills, and active shooter drills, and we want to prepare for this scenario as well. We would like specific, clear, research-based metrics for a safe in-person opening. We would like a breakdown of what will be done when cases arise in schools or classrooms to mitigate risk. We would like transparent mitigation strategies in place before the decision is made to return in person that can assure teachers that we can keep the students and families that we partner with safe. We would also like to be able to teach in person in a way that respects and honors developmental needs for our students. At this point, we do not believe we have these in place. For example, tonight, Dr. Monds mentioned that mask-wearing would be essential, especially as older children can spread the virus as adults, as easily as adults. According to page twenty-eight of the county's back-to-school slides, the mask requirement the county has publicized does not include mask-wearing in the classroom when they are six feet away, even in high schools. This is a concern for us. We can normalize mask-wearing. We cannot enforce it under this guideline. Therefore, we would like to partner with families, educators, and the community to provide safe virtual instruction to start the year, until it is safe to go back in person. We firmly believe it is not safe to do this at this time, and that the lives of students, families, and teachers in this community will be affected if we begin the year in person. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kate. All right, I'm going to call the next three people. Before we do that, I was just going to give Judy, Lee, and Katrina Carlson just a minute if they'd like to respond to anything. So Judy and Katrina.
Echoing that, I've appreciated hearing it. Please keep it coming.
All right, so I'm going to call on, next up, we've got Sage, Kelly's iPhone, and Dee Littlefield. And I just want to remind you that we've got about twenty-three minutes left. We're at seven oh seven by my watch. Remember that I'm giving people two minutes to speak, and I am running a timer. So, all right, with that, Sage, you're up.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you so much for doing this. It's a, it's a great labor. It shows your, your care for the community during this really tumultuous and stressful time. I am definitely for the virtual option, even though I, I hate that my child will lose a, a year of school. I just, it really breaks my heart, but I feel like it's the socially responsible thing to do. I do wish that when the county talked about, the county and other guests, participants talked about children, that they made a clear division between kids and teenagers, because I feel like that group gets muddled. And if you're reading the newspaper, you see the teens do die, they are in intensive care, you know, that they are suffering from this inflammatory systemic condition. They're getting blood clots, they're having strokes. I mean, it's, it's serious. So I don't want people to just feel like this is our teachers, we've got to do this for our teachers, and the teachers are being whims if they are not out there to just serve the public. The other comment I wanted to make is I've seen people grous about the fact that the county, or the rumor that the county may provide childcare for their teachers. And that, I just want to say, I am so supportive of teachers having childcare for many reasons. One, I, I work with, in my meetings, my supervisor has two kids, age two and seven. And every time we have meetings, they're constantly being disrupted by someone crying, someone needing help, someone needing to be fed, the kids getting into some kind of conflict, which is, she's got great kids, but they have needs too. And so, would any of us want our children's education if it's virtual, which is already stressful enough for everybody involved, for the teachers, being on live TV, to have, you know, their kids come in and claim their needs? I mean, none of us would want that. So I, I wish people would think about, you know, let's serve the teachers. Let's support the teachers so that they can support our kids. The other point I wanted to make, as a, as a former teacher, is that teaching is not a forty-hour-a-week job. I know when I was teaching, I worked every day after school. I'd put in hours on the weekend. And our teachers are going to be putting in SCADs more hours as they adapt, try to adapt from in-person learning to virtual learning. I mean, and to make that engaging and challenging, the workload is going to be enormous. So I totally support our teachers being supported so they can support our kids. It's not the same as any of us working from home.
Thank you so much, Sage. And next up is Kelly.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So, I attended the- Okay. So I attended the meeting on Friday and I walked away with more questions than I went in with. So I find it so interesting because I'm certainly on the outside of all of this. We are brand-new to Charlottesville. And we are brand-new to public school. So my perspective and where we sit as a family is right in the middle. We are a high-risk family. My husband's very ill. That's why we transferred to Charlottesville. But I also have a very driven teenage daughter. And she did Virtual Virginia 100% last year. And she had phenomenal instruction. And I actually went into the meeting last week at 2:00 until 2:00 last week. My assumption was that when Virginia teachers went virtual, that they went to Virtual Virginia because it is Virginia's already-established mode of virtual education. And I was shocked that the teachers reinvented the wheel. And not so shocked that in an emergency situation and having to reinvent the wheel, that it didn't seem to be very it didn't seem to turn out very well. Seemed to be the gist of the complaint of the, of the parents. And that, I mean, I can't even imagine having to do that on an emergency basis, and I'm not surprised that it didn't go well. Um, so like I said, we're smack dab in the middle of all of this, and I'm a little surprised that there's not going to be an option for families. And I don't know if there was an option, which option we would choose because we are a high-risk family, but my daughter, who has no support group there with friends, she's not Snapchatting with her friends there. She doesn't have a friend there, not one. And she hasn't, she came out of a, an elite boarding school in the Northeast and she doesn't have a support group in her peer group, and she needs that. And a year later, she doesn't have that because she did Virtual Virginia online for a whole year. And even though she got phenomenal instruction, it doesn't meet that very important part of socialization. And I can't look at my husband's health and say, his health is important, but hers isn't. That's a really
Yeah, thank you so much, Kelly. We really appreciate your comments. And, and, and please feel free to, to send us an email if you have a little bit more that you'd like to say. I'm gonna need to move on to Dee Littlefield. And I think you are ready to go unmuted.
I am. So, thank you very much. So first, I want to say thank you to the school board for having these sessions. It's, it's great that you're actually doing this instead of not listening to the community. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the teachers and the parents. This is all a new stressful situation that we're thrown into. So I don't mean to sound offensive to anyone with my opinions here, but, so thank you all for being, for caring about yourselves, your family, and the community. It's, that's something I really do appreciate. I'm, just for the record, I am for in-person if it's a safe option. So if possible, I would love to have the option to choose that if that's what I decide is, is okay for my family. I want everyone to feel comfortable. So that's why I like for the parents, teachers, and staff to have an option here. But we would go for in-person if we could, based on what we know today, knowing that this is a lot unknown. For those that are wondering, and this is for the school board, but it's also for the parents too, to what thresholds will be considered safe versus unsafe, right? So my biggest problem personally is, what if there's never a vaccine? Right? So vaccine, it only lasts for two weeks, it lasts for six weeks, it lasts for eight, whatever it is, it's not viable, it doesn't really work long-term. When do we decide what is safe, what is not safe? And so any hard metrics on that, the school board says this year, this fall, and then I know things evolve over time. So that, that kind of information will be appreciated, just to have that as a line in the sand. The third option, the third thing I want to talk about is more creative, and I'll make it quick. Would the school board be open? People have talked about in the, in the situation we're in that they will consist to like neighborhood learning pods or friends, friends of friends in order to provide a virtual learning environment. So if we go all virtual, if that's the decision of the school board and other families are doing virtual learning school pods, where they pull 10 students together and have somebody supervise so that they can go to work and do what they can. Would we be willing to make the public school buildings learning centers instead of public school buildings? Where parents would, in association with the PTA or however it would work, would they be open to opening up a school building where we could send our kids there if we feel comfortable? Where they could be in a pod of how many ever students is the right number with some supervised learning where the teachers could stay remote? Right? The teachers could be virtual, they could present to the classroom, but the students that the parents felt was okay could be in-person at those facilities. So I guess that's an option I haven't heard anyone else talk about here in this environment at least. So I would just like that to be thought about and would love the school board's opinion if that's something they would consider or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And I think it's another good moment. We've got about 13 minutes left. So we'll have time for just a few more questions. It's a good moment just to check in with our school board members and see if they would like to just make any comments pertaining to anything that's been said in the last few moments here. So Katrina and Judy.
I would just again say thank you everyone for sharing, and I really appreciate that. I think everyone can, can see it's a complicated issue and I appreciate that people are comfortable feeling, sharing a variety of opinions. One thing that I'm picking up that I didn't pick up at the last town hall is the providing the metrics. What I think actually Dee Littlefield, I don't know your first name, you just mentioned it, and someone mentioned it earlier. If we don't reopen, if we do virtual, can we at least provide the clear metrics about when would we consider reopening? So it's just something I've noted that I wanted to say.
All right, so we've got Martha, Kate, and Kelly. So I'm gonna just unmute you three, let's see. All right.
All right, this is Martha. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yeah, thanks, Martha.
Thank you. I just wanted to share about the meals. So during the, us being closed, the school being closed, we were able to go to certain locations breakfast and lunch for the children. And I am so appreciative of having that opportunity and option to be able to take advantage of that. My question is, for those who decide to choose the virtual option, even in-person and having the Friday being the asynchronous virtual, what will the school lunches and breakfast look like for those individuals? And also, when, if we, if the school district decides to go 100% online, you know, starting out, how will the lunches and breakfast look? Will it be similar to what is set up right now? Or will, you know, the children need to go to the specific schools they would be assigned to, to pick up those? And will there be funding available or waived like it was during the summer? Or will we be required to, to pay the little lunch fee like we did during the regular school year? But yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again for providing the meals over the summer. They were definitely helpful for our family and sure a lot of other families were able to take advantage of that and, and be able to have the food for their children as well. That was my comment and question.
I'm gonna chime in real quick because there is one little piece of positive news that I got today. I, we have talked about it in school lunches. Right now, we have a grant that's funding those. I've gotten it many times. I babysit a bunch of kids because I'm doing like a childcare swap with other working families. And so I go get the lunches. That grant is expiring, but I did hear today, there's a rumor that we might get it again, which would allow that the lunches continue the way they have. Otherwise, it would be a return to during a typical school year where if you have a free reduced lunch, you would, you would have to pay at that level.
Thank you for that. And I would just want to say real quickly that that is certainly something that's high priority, though, for the school division. And, and so we are gonna, I've, I've noted that question, but this is something that's already being, you know, thought about and considered. So thank you so much, Martha. Next up is Kate T.
Hi, everyone. So I have three quick questions or comments or concerns. My first one is kind of along the same lines as Martha's. I have a child who has food allergies and high-risk food allergies. And if we go back in hybrid and children, elementary children, and even high school students are meeting in a classroom, assigned classroom, how are we going to make sure that children with high-risk food allergies are taken care of? And that's a concern because I went back and read their return to school twice and that was not addressed there. So that's a concern that I would like to make sure is taken care of because we do have a lot of students who do have life-threatening food allergies. Two, I'd also like to know if we do go virtual, what kind of protections or help for support staff, bus drivers, TAs, office personnel, how are we going to make sure that they have and continue to be employable and use them to help with our students? And then three, I would be very interested because it was kind of announced through daily progress and other areas in even the teachers newsletter that they get through the district that there was all of a sudden this fourth, fourth option of a virtual option, and there really are no details of what that looks like. Is it a nine-week? Is it an 18-week? Is it, how, is it, we'll wait and see how it goes at nine weeks? Could we have Dr. Haas, because I know he was the one who was offering that option and creating that option, to provide a little bit more public details of what that looks like? So we, if we do go all virtual, we have a little bit more of what to expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Kate. We, these, all of your questions will be noted, and I would just point out that you are not alone in terms of the allergies question. That has actually been coming up a, a little bit more than you might expect. So
Yeah, we just got two emails about it today, actually, and I know that we're looking into it. It's, yes.
All right, and Kelly, you're up next.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a parent in the Scottsville district. My daughter goes to middle school. And she has an IEP. She's a special ed student. She has a learning disability. And virtual learning this spring was very difficult for her. I thank goodness for her teacher who was willing to privately Zoom for her every morning to try to help her hang on because it was very difficult for her. My son is, also is an IEP student. He has autism. And I so desperately want him back in school because school provides for him, dare I say, forced socialization. He may not, he may not enjoy it so much, but it's really important for him to get out of his own little world and learn how to socialize with other children. So I am absolutely, I am absolutely wanting them back in school. But I'm also not willing to make my children guinea pigs in a grand experiment. A friend of mine, her name was Lauren Anderson Hadley, died on May 2nd due to COVID. She took her daughter to Disney World for her daughter's 10th birthday. Her daughter did not become infected, but my sweet friend Lauren did. I'm saving the last text that I received from Lauren. She told me that we got on a plane to Universal, we stood in two lines the first two days. Then we got on the plane and came back home. So I know that I have it. This is before she got her test results. I come flying out of bed in the middle of the night, gasping for air. I do not smoke, I do not vape, I have no underlying respiratory stuff, but the truth is that people are drowning. I've just been trying to sleep, sitting up, which is really, not really helping my sleep game, but I am not drowning in my sleep. This is real. Keep your children safe. And I lost her on May 2nd, so I can't in good conscience, send my children back to a disease or a virus that is only, what, six, eight months old? I know we may have to live with it, and that's fine, but we're not there yet. We do not have enough information about this disease and where it's going to go. I keep hearing conflicting things about children and how they transmit it every time I turn on the news. I also have to share that, yes, I'm also a teacher. I have 18 years of teaching experience. And children are messy and unpredictable, and that, God love them, is how they learn. This is not the same as going to the grocery store when you can separate yourself from other adults. These are children. I say things like, get your hands out of your pants, or why did you lick his shoe on a daily basis? And that's why we love our job so much, but this really is also what makes children vulnerable. And so, you know, they may not be able to contract the disease, but will they be able to carry it to others? I think it's time that Albemarle County staff gets really creative and really busy. We have the best employees. And I know that our bus drivers and our custodians and our teaching assistants and our office staff, I think we can all work together to make a virtual start, not a virtual year, just a virtual start. The most robust education that we can possibly give if we start planning now. It will not be like the spring. But I just don't want to see Albemarle County become the guinea pigs for the state of Virginia. I hope I'm wrong. I hope that no, we don't have any
Thank you, Kelly. I'm just gonna have to, I'm gonna have to move on to the next two. I'd love to be able to have two more speakers with the three minutes that we have next. So thank you so much, Kelly. I've got Gray Hepner and Deborah McDowell.
Hi, I'm Dr. Gray Hepner. I'm an infectious disease physician. And for the last 20 years, I've spent my career developing vaccines. I have four observations and I am a resident of Croze. My wife is a counselor in Albemarle County Schools. First, I think first and foremost, we're all concerned about the children. We've noted they have a low attack rate and relatively low morbidity. But we cannot forget that they are asymptomatic spreaders. And that means that there are three groups of people that we must be concerned about, the teachers, the staff, and the vulnerable adult caregivers at home. My wife is a counselor, is very much aware of many families where our grandparents is in charge of the child. Many of people through the miracles of medicine have chronic diseases, kidney disease, hypertension, and they're doing relatively well, but they're very vulnerable. We do not have the ability to look at someone and tell if they have HI, if they have this disease. We have inadequate testing. So all I will say is, it's not an easy task that you have. But I do think the most important thing is if you do have any in-person school, is that the epidemiologist carefully track are there additional cases amongst the staff, amongst the teachers, amongst the families, and be alert and have the courage to make a choice. We all make the best decision when we can. I would like to refute a couple of things that were said. One was said that schools are opened elsewhere in the world. It doesn't cause a problem. So much depends on what you do in the school, the measures you take. But it also, I'll just point to Israel, which is a modern, very modern state. It's just been an utter disaster and the spike there uncontroversially was because they, they opened schools with too much background COVID-19 transmission. Lastly, I'd like to say that vaccines are imminent. It's every reason to believe that they would work. They do work pre-clinically. They are safe and new technologies being brought forth. Billions of doses will be made within a year. Many of these will be available within six months and some sooner. I think it's, we should not fall susceptible to tabloid journalism where people say, will it last a week, will it last a month? The fact is, we need a means to bring people together. If you have to get a booster dose, so be it. Lastly, there was an unfortunate comparison to influenza vaccines, a nihilistic statement that they don't seem to work. We have so much morbidity. The uptake for influenza vaccines is unfortunately too low in our country. Amongst the geriatric populations, around 60%, and middle adults, 50%. We don't do our duty not to be vaccinated and become part of the solution rather than part of the problem. So in closing, I, I beg you to carefully monitor the consequences of whatever decision you make and be on top of it. And if you do have excess cases because of any of the choices you make, that you be on it early and make a decision to that you be on it early and make a decision to react to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And uh, one final uh comment for tonight is Deborah McDowell. So uh, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be very brief as uh some other people have already expressed uh some of my concerns and raised questions that I would have asked. So I'll mainly make a comment and uh that is that um, yes, we all live with risk. That's absolutely the case, we live with risk all the time. But I would worry that we would want to have a system where we are giving more emphasis to personal choice. And um, so if a pa- parent wants to take that risk, they should. I think we should bear in mind what the percentages, wh- what responses do we get and let those responses uh dictate. We all have varying opinions as to uh whether this is safe or not, how safe it is, what risks we're running. But um, I hope that the school board would be guided by the responses that they've actually received from parents uh as well as from teachers. I can say that I am a person in my family who was able to help with um the online learning for my nephew. Um, but his father is in a high-risk category, uh, serious diabetic, just had his foot amputated and has many other comorbidities. So I think we have to bear in mind who the children are, what homes they will be going back into. Uh, it's not just this um, a particular student in a particular class. It's as people are telling us every day, it's what is the area of contact? Uh, how many people are people coming into contact uh with? Uh, as someone who works at the university with the option of of doing online teaching, I've elected that option so that I can minimize uh the risk. Um, you have a great challenge ahead of you. Uh, as everyone else has said, I'm very grateful to you for providing uh interested parties with the opportunity to listen, to learn from one another. Uh, but I hope we can be guided by the principle of doing the greatest good for the greatest numbers of people with the least amount of risk. I grant, that is a very, very tall order. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Deborah. Um, so I think with that, uh, we we have run out of time. We're actually three minutes over here at seven thirty almost, well now seven thirty four PM. But this really has been, I think, a a very productive session and in terms of just collecting your thoughts and um suggestions. Um, I know people have a lot of feelings about all of this and it's it's really good for everyone here to understand those better. Um, and with that, I'm just gonna pass it over to Katrina and Judy and and just let them uh say a few final things.
Thanks very much, Helen. Um, I I just, I I want to thank everyone who has spoken to us here. I heard a lot of truth being spoken. Um, a- as you can tell when people well up, you know, how they're speaking to you from their truth. So I really appreciate that. Uh, I also appreciate everyone who has sent us emails, um, who's brought us concerns at school-based town halls. Uh, we've been attending those as well. So I encourage you to go to those. Um, and they might have more information uh for each specific school. Uh, I I want to say that we're in an unprecedented and extremely stressful situation and I want you to know that we hear those stresses and difficulties and arguments and, you know, they're all valid and I want to assure you that we're listening. And and I personally identify with lots of these comments. I myself have a fifth grader in our system who had um a high-risk food allergy for a long time. So uh, you know, we, we on the board, we identify with um the situation. So I just want you to know that we're making these decisions in a thoughtful and deliberate way. And uh, I also want you to know that we hear you and we will continue to because we're making a decision on Thursday, but surely that's not the last one we're gonna make. Uh, so it's a continuing conversation and I hope that people will continue to be engaged with us um with your concerns and comments. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to just start off by saying my AC is broken in this room and I have sat through this meeting and like tried, like been hoping that sweat's not dripping off. It's not because I was worried about uh being in this town hall. It's because it's like ninety degrees in this room. So I used to be a teacher, so I was, made my students do an exit ticket. My exit ticket for listening to the the comments today, I will say it was different than the town hall I attended on Friday. Friday, my takeaway was that parents really wanted information before they made their decisions. Uh, my takeaway today is I heard a lot about risk and we all have a kind of a different understanding of what what we um consider to be too, too much of a risk to take. Um, and I wrote notes on all that, but so that's my my like one-sentence summary um to keep in my mind as we move forward. Uh, another thing I'd like to say is that I want everyone to be aware that come, our meeting on Thursday, we do not have public comment. Um, so this is our last town hall, but I want parents to know that there's parents, teachers, community members, everyone who's involved, that there's still ways to provide input. Those are, um, I'm happy that we've had over a thousand people participate in these town halls, which is great. I've attended town halls that have had one person, usually the same person at multiple town halls. So this is a vast improvement. Um, the other things you can do are you can email the school board as a whole, you can email the school board individually. Um, it is taking a while to get back to those emails, but they're definitely being read. Um, another thing is please, please, please attend your school. If you have children in the system, any of your teacher, attend your school-specific Zoom session. That's something that, um, actually, I think the board kind of did a push to, to have those um school-specific Zoom sessions. And I think every school is mandated to do two of them now. And I've attended the one for Mountain View, uh, Woodbrook and Agnor hurt and they're incredibly useful for kind of the logistical details that you want about your specific school. Lori Ann, I think I might have seen you in the uh Mountain View one and um she shared, I mean, teachers have some of those details about what it's gonna look like. And so please attend those if you can. Um, and then I think, I think I have that all. I had one person send me a snail mail thing, my address is on, in the calendar and my number. So feel free to reach out that way if you'd like as well. Um, other than that, all I can say is thank you for sharing your thoughts. It's an incredibly frustrating time. I know that as a parent myself, I'm a working parent. And I'm sorry, I I I guess I I have to say, I'm sorry that we don't have answers and solutions for everything. Um, we are working hard and I really appreciate everyone who was willing to share.
All right, and with that, I just hope to remind you all that, um, you know, that we are keeping our K twelve Albemarle site uh current and adding information as soon as we have it. Um, so like I said earlier, familiarize yourselves with that. I think you'll be able to access a wealth of information there. Um, and aside from that, it's it's so wonderful to see how engaged um you are. It's great, as Katrina and Judy said, to to have a a really full discussion as we have tonight. So keep reaching out to us, um, you know, keep letting us know what you need from us and um we're so glad that you are here tonight. Thank you.